Okay, well, good evening. We will call to order the Shenandoah City Council meeting for Wednesday, August 14th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Call to roll and notice that everybody is here tonight. We're gonna stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stay standing with us, then I'll say a quick invocation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, we come before you tonight. We want to say thank you, as always, for your grace, your love, your forgiveness. Thank you for all of the people that you send our way in our lives to help serve this community, whether they be residents, or staff, strategic partners, just anybody that's involved in trying to make this a better place for our residents to live and raise their families. We're thinking tonight about Ms. Linda Woods. Not only a resident, not only a former staff member. We know she's with you and that's a better place, but we're all sad that she's not here with us anymore. Please be with her family in this time. I'm gonna take just a brief second and let everybody say their own personal prayer to you for Ms. Woods. Lord, thank you for people like Linda Woods. Thank you for putting them in our lives and in our community. Thank you for everything you do for us, and we pray these things in your son's name and all God-people said.
Amen.
Amen. Okay, we will move into item five, which is Citizens Forum, and Ms. Betty LaHiri's here. I have to say, I'm happy to see you, Ms. LaHiri.
Well, you know my name is Betty LaHiri. I live on 180 Silverwood Ranch Drive. And my concern is, we have rogue subcontractors that have been doing damage to citizens' property. And I talked with some city personnel, and they said, "Too bad, nothing you can do about it." And I'm going, surely, we have some, something that will stop this. I mean, it was like, they cut our water line, and to get it, I mean, it was, it was a mess. And I think there should be some form of, a contractor must be some, have some, something there, like a guaranteed bond or something for incidents like this. And this came about when we started to deal with energy. And you know, we've had all these outages over in Silverwood Ranch. You know, and it's like, they haven't done, and I'm not saying, I don't know who does this thing, when they're all marked with flags, and then they just go down and dig the line, and they disregard the flags, they disregard this, and then they leave their trash behind. Now, as a citizen, if you drive down Vision Park, you will see big wooden spools with cable on it. They have been there for a year. There's not one, there's two. In front of my daughter's property, they finished the job and left one of the wooden spools right there. Now, granted, we called the city, the city came and picked it up. However, it's really not the city's job to do that. It's not my job to do it. It's the job of the contractor or subcontractors. Well, apparently, when you have these subcontractors, they come, they do a job, and then when they do damage, they change their name and move on. And Energy said it's very difficult to keep hold of this. So, I'm just stating as a citizen, that I think as a city, we need to do something about it, to protect us, to protect our property. I mean, you're talking, granted, it was $450 to get the line fixed, but we shouldn't have to go through this. That's my, that's my, that's my story. So, thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Okay, from that, we'll move into item six, which is Council Inquiry. Does anybody have anything they need to bring up right now? Okay. Then we will move on to item seven, which is a presentation of a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Counsel, this was requested by Councilmember Fletcher last year to recognize Childhood Cancer Awareness Month again this year by proclamation. If you recall, last year, we had a young resident, and there was a blood drive to help try to meet her needs while she was recovering. So, that's the reason behind this proclamation. And September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, so that's the timing.
We don't have anybody here to accept the proclamation on behalf of you, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing. This was Councilman Fletcher's idea, and I'm glad he came up with it. I wish I'd have come up with it myself. I wholeheartedly supported it when he, when he brought it up a couple of months ago. I just felt like this was the right month to do it, being that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So, I am more than happy to sign this, and I think it's a great, it's a great thing to do on our part. So, thank you, Councilman Fletcher, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, we will move into item eight, which is Presentation of a Plan and Zoning Commission Preliminary Report Regarding a Zoning Amendment for Special Use Permit for a Mixed Beverage Permit.
Counsel, this is for Top Sushi, which is going to be in Metro Park Square. This is a mixed beverage permit. It does not include late hours. This went through public hearings before P&amp;Z, and it was unanimously recommended for approval. And Jackie is here, if you have any questions. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward.
Clarify, it's not late hours?
Not late hours.
Okay, we will move into item nine, which is a public hearing regarding said special use permit. And we will open the public hearing at 7:08. Would anybody like to speak during the public hearing?
And we do have representatives from Top Sushi here, if you have any questions.
Is it good sushi? Here it is.
It's top sushi.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at 7:09. And we will move into item 10, which is Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt the Following Ordinance. And it's an ordinance for the City of Shenandoah for a special use permit for mixed beverage for Top Sushi located 8851 Metro Park Drive. Move that we approve? I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to approve. I have a second by Councilman Grisky. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries 5-0. Welcome Shenandoah. Item 11, Discussion Regarding Changes to the Proposed Budget Discussion at the Budget Workshop Meetings Held on August 9th, 2019 and August 10th, 2019. This is discussion only.
Mayor and Counsel, I sent you this email earlier, and also have that same email printed out in front of you, with a memo, followed by several documents. The first four documents are just the IMI summary of changes for the General Fund CBV Debt Service and Water Sewer. The fifth one is the police overtime sheet that we generated during workshop. There were some minor changes to it. The sixth part of it is John Maynor's CBV New Program informational sheet. The seventh is the utility bill and payment information sheet that was requested, and page eight was a part that me and Joseph felt like we needed to present, just to clarify that water line discussion we had with the elimination of the Medical Plaza from the Pine Croft water line project, adding Savannah, and how it all calculated out at the end. So, I know it was a little short, you haven't had enough time to review it, and I apologize for that. We're still working on it up to today. But if you have any questions, feel free to ask. And this will also come back, this agenda item will also come back at the 28th meeting. Once we, at that meeting, we'll have a better idea of what MDD is going to cover, and we can go from there with a lot of the projects.
So, the PD overtime is now 94,000?
There's one with adding the new office, one officer out of the two proposed, and the option of adding new, no officers at all. And so, which sheet are you looking at? Yes, the new? With the one officer?
Yes, adding one officer has three tables on it, four tables.
There was a small typo on the special events. When I transferred it over, I put, when we were working during Budget Workshop, I put 990 instead of 9,900, so that just changed a little bit. So, I apologize. I caught it afterwards.
I thought we were looking like 72 at the workshop.
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, it was like, we've been cutting down to 72,000 for overtime. I mean, even with the nine, that nine thousand dollar, that still only puts us at 81,000.
And also increased.
The lower table that says total cost of 313, that would have been with two officers, and the overtime was still 120? Is that, that was your original, that was the original proposal, correct? Yeah, it was like 120 was the original.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the shift coverage overtime is where we are. We're not good down Saturday, on Saturday.
So, the proposed cost one, right next to it then, does that include all the TMRS and taxes and?
Yes.
Because it ideally would be head-to-head for me with the same listings on there, so I can see that those this and the others that.
I'll have to find my original document and double-check those, but I'll bring it back next meeting.
Okay.
I just can't find my original, I think it's on my desk.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I do want to have a question here. So, we've got, it looks to me like we have a number of officers. I'm seeing in the cost of an officer, $4,444 for overtime. Is that your average overtime that each officer pulls each given year? It's on that same page, under the cost of officer.
What is the 44?
And we assume they're gonna work $4,444 worth?
Can you give me those numbers? I backed them for staff member.
Oh, so that's the average of what an officer works?
Well, if you were to take those overtime hours and allocate them over to employees, the patrol.
That's what she's saying. We figure that's how many, if you allocated that, all the overtime over all the officers.
Okay, so it's the average.
Right.
Okay. And that's at the 120 figure?
How many officers is it for a chief?
We have, all of them, right?
Well, but what number you figure that, that off of?
I think it's 27. Let me open the budget up here.
Is that off current year's budget? Like what, is that how that was figured?
I couldn't hear you.
Is that was, is that off current year's budget? Like, that number?
Yeah, she's the one that comes up with that number, and I think that's only for the officers that are eligible for overtime.
Yes.
Oh, sure, yeah, okay. That makes sense.
It's usually patrol, that's who I allocate them. Sorry. You can freeze it on me.
So, that'd be the 16 of patrol and the one?
So, that was for 27 officers?
27 officers.
So, you're figuring the overtime off 16 officers? Is that what you said?
No, it'd be 27 total.
27 total officers.
Is that what you're figuring it off?
Actually, is it broken onto the overtime sheets that we give, that you give me, or no?
That's 119,988 dollars.
Right.
Which gets us back to the 120.
That's not right, because 27.
Well, that would be correct, because there was a catch made when that figure was being calculated.
27.
Oh, it's over 22.
Right.
22, and then two additional?
22 or 24 officers?
22, and then I break it out.
Yeah, not 27.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong line. They have 27 patrol staff. I'm sorry.
Yeah, not everyone is eligible for overtime.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, there's nothing else operational that we can do to lower the 94,000?
I thought we had it at 72.
That's the number that I was remembering from.
Let us look at it and...
Okay. Well, while y'all are doing that, I'm gonna pick on Don here. Because obviously, I haven't looked at this, so maybe you feel free to give us a, of the quick rundown. Did you make changes to that 100,000, or would you?
Well, let me explain to you.
Okay, that's, go for it.
Okay, so, on a quick and simple, per the last go-round, you noticed that there was $46,000 in change that I put up here, 575, which was roughly 12.5% of my total advertising budget that I had saved. And then there was also the $100,000 in new programs. And y'all didn't like seeing just large amounts with no explanation there. So, I've tried to go back and fill in. And what I've done here, to let you know, not all of these...
Which pages, John?
Pardon? So, anyhow, what I was trying to let you know is, not all of these are hard fact numbers. I'm doing the best that I can with all of this. So, as we go through, some of these things were on here. I just wanted to give y'all a little more explanation, like the AJR Media. We have that on there, but I wanted to go through and show you everything that was actually there. And part of this goes back to our point of like, having a seat at the table and trying to be part of the larger regional community, as well as also try to be forward-thinking of needs that we have, that we need to upgrade and do some additional stuff with. So, on this, we've got advertising here. If you have any questions specifically, you can look at the stuff with AJR Media, but it's the Texas Travel Guide. It's doing travel story on their website. It's coming up with one of their campaigns, an e-blast, needle blast, that we're looking at, doing two of those. One through TexasHighways.com, and one through TourTexas.com, their website, so that we can get that all pushed out as we're getting in to year-end and talking about Stag Bowl, letting people know, raising awareness. Travel Click is our, one of our two digital firms that we're here. So, these are redoing that, what we're doing, and we're seeing, as I told y'all at last meeting, it's preliminary, but we're getting some really good results, that I'm really happy to talk to y'all about offline. And so, both of those are going well, and we're re-upping those. Houston and Beyond is the greater regional program, which I told you about. This is a pay-to-play. So, what you have here are two different levels that they have for cities to be able to come in. And unlike where I've been in Dallas before, where most of the cities were allowed to just come in even though they played, this is an application process, so I just want y'all to be aware of that. It's a pretty involved application, it's about 10 pages. So, we are working on that right now, Kathy and I. We're gonna be meeting tomorrow, and I've gotten that application completed, ostensibly. So, we have money in for being at the table, as well as some funds, half of it, $7,500, really being to use for other programs that you get when you in. But each one of those programs are pay-to-play.
Sure.
And I've been reaching out to their lead liaison. This week is Texas Association of CBV conferences in Denton, and they're offsite. And so, she emailed me back, and she basically explained, there's still nothing she can do to provide more information on that, because it goes before the board, goes before the committee, and they're changing the program.
Okay.
So, it's the best that I can kind of do with. Texas Mentally, I had met last week, prior to our meeting with our rep there, and there's some programs that I want to explore there with them, that are a combination perhaps of print and digital, social. But they have four issues a year that they do, and they're travel-related and travel-themed. January is Houston-specific, then they have a spring, then they have a summer, and they have a fall travel. So, I think if we can look at some innovative program in that, I think that's statewide. It would get us out in a profile with other people that are advertising and participating. So, I think it's a place we need to be. Trips to Discover is a program that we did last year with Stag Bowl. It was social media-related, we had travel stories, information about the city, other things, wasn't just Stag Bowl. So, on the city, we had between, I want to say between 50,000 and 65,000 Facebook views and stuff, so I thought it was a really good effort, so we're looking at redoing that. And then, if you go to the next page, what you can see on here as we go through, I was trying to clarify the crowd riff, I think there might have been something there, but it's a split between us and the city. It's kind of a 2/3 to 1/3, so that's how that is working out. I've got, for creative, we, one of the things that I didn't have in here specifically was design, production, and getting all of that done and handled. So, I've been able to get estimates in for what I think I'm gonna need, and I think that's a pretty good number. We have photography, videography, and drone photography that I would like to try and make this year. This is one that I'm still doing a bit of a guess with, that I know as we talked last go-round, because people haven't come back with me, like I left messages and...
I'm sure Joseph knows all about that, right?
Yeah, so we're doing, doing the best, and some of it's educated by my previous experience, and I'm just using it as kind of placeholder.
And that's fine, we understand that. We just wanted to see a little bit of a plan.
Yeah, so, so I think that's it. And if you look at that, and then next, what I wanted to let you know, is the PR new programs are there for 100. So, we have all these programs in here, and I've got some additional stuff to let you know. And there's additional ads, depending on this, that I have not signed off on full-blown plans, but they're for meeting and sports-related trade publications. And I think those are things that are gonna be important to us moving forward. And I'm waiting, I don't have those things, but I think those are good, good numbers of stuff here to see, so.
Good. Well, thank you for clarifying that. I think these are all great programs. It's gonna really help us out, but just...
Well, thank you, and I appreciate y'all's consideration and support on doing these kind of things very, very much. And like I said, I think we're getting some really good initial results, but I'm happy to talk to y'all offline after the fact.
Thank you, John. So, I think I may have figured out where our discrepancy is. So, these numbers, this 150, 287 for the old overtime, and the 94, 674, they do not include, I'm sorry, the numbers that we were working with during Budget Workshop did not include the retirement or the taxes. If you take those two out, that gets, that puts you at the old number of 12548, and the new number would be 760, or 76068.
No, so...
So, my question becomes...
Those were included, I figured it out, so...
Those were included in the longevity pay and retirement section in the budget?
I did the retirement and the, the taxes on that spreadsheet during workshop, yes. Is that what you're asking?
No, so, in the actual budget, we don't have line items for retirement or taxes for overtime.
Overtime retirement.
Are those numbers already lumped into your retire, your...
Yes.
Okay, so, then by definition, those numbers should drop in the actual budget. So, these, these numbers here that we have on this spreadsheet are already representative of the numbers that you have in the budget?
The retirement dropping, yes.
Yeah, so the retirement's gonna drop, and the taxes are gonna drop. So, we can, in other words, so that 94, 674 isn't, isn't the number we were working with before?
Well, so, no, I went back, and per my IMI list from Saturday, I had put in possible OT reduction of 148, 148,000. So, when you go back to my spreadsheet, and if you put it back in my old typo of that 990, it brings you down to the total savings of 148, 123. So, that was the only mishap on that one.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is your, your retirement line and your FICA tax line, those two, that 400,000 and $2,000, and that 17743, those two lines should change in the budget.
Yes, they will, yeah.
And will they change? Will retirement change by 12,786? Is that what you're assuming?
No, it'll change with the 7,000, 7,800? Because that would be the new, that would be the difference.
The delta of retirement on that chart you're looking at is about 7...
Because you're taking the 150 minus the 94.
I see what you're saying.
Well...
7,800, whatever, is that right? Yeah. So, it's only gonna go down 7,000.
Right, 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 I see what you're saying. But we're still not double-dipping it. We had, we weren't figuring that in when we were, when we were reducing the overtime amount, we were reducing it based off of the 120 number, which was stated as overtime in the budget.
Right.
So, I don't, we're not comparing apples and oranges, is where I'm going with that.
Yeah, because 72 plus...
It's 76068.
Yeah.
Before you take into account retirement and taxes.
Oh, so you're talking about the 150 number? Is that what's throwing you guys off?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, so without that, your retirement, the overtime is going to be 12548?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that's the number we were looking at during Budget Workshop.
I'm sorry.
So...
I think we all confused each other.
Yeah.
I apologize.
I wouldn't confused.
So, is the 4,444 number gonna go down? If we take that 94,000 and divide it by, is it 22 officers, 23 officers?
If you take 76068 divided by 22, that comes out to 3457.
Yes.
Now, that's not weighted, that doesn't include the retirement taxes.
Well, it's gonna be one person instead of two people, so it's gonna be 3,000.
But neither does, but neither does in the, in the cost of the officer either, so...
I might make a suggestion in the future that we pull retirement, FICA, we pull retirement taxes and retire, overtime, retirement, overtime taxes out.
Into a separate line item.
To a separate line.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Or, the flip side of that is to weight, is to put that into your overtime fee. I mean, you picked an average, I'm assuming we picked an average hourly rate, so what he's doing is picking, you know, we need this many hours for late call, we're gonna multiply it by that rate. Well, that rate could, in addition to the time and a half, could also include all the taxes, so we get a fully weighted penalty. Just another thought, instead of, because that's what I think our issue is, is everything's piled into one category instead of regular salary versus...
Also, this 4444 overtime rate, is that because they're working 12-hour shifts? Is that all automatically figured into that? Because they don't get, they don't get overtime, because they work a short day.
So, that's what I'm saying, that rate should, if the over, total overtime goes down, then the average overtime per officer should also go down.
That's correct.
So, my question is, you've got a cost of an officer at 81,000, but you got this pile of overtime money. Is that cost of an over, of an officer really whatever 81 minus 44 is? See what I'm saying? We've got an amount of overtime for this one officer, but that 4,444 is actually already calculated in this part of the budget as the big, the big bucket of overtime that the whole department gets. So, we're, we're writing it down twice. I think you can take that line, that 4,444, out entirely for that officer.
Actually, if you're adding a new officer, then this would be correct, because it's not in the second pot.
Well, it is, the second pot's set.
No, because this was a proposal to have these officers.
No, because this was a proposal to have these officers. So this would be the cost to add that officer outside of what the budget number are.
So the 94, so we should take the 94,000, divide it by 22, our current overtime eligible officers, right?
Well, actually, the 76068 because the retirement and taxes are in a different line.
Okay. So whatever it is, divide that by 22, that should get us the amount to add for that, that officer, which is like 3,400 and some change, I don't know.
Yes.
Somebody over there can do some math.
I did just a second. It was like 3, 3,400 bucks.
So that, that new officer will actually cost us $1,000 less if, if we're going to assume that this pot of overtime is going to grow because we've added another body.
It seems like it will go down.
This is again, this is the argument I think we've always, we're going to keep having.
Yeah, we're knocking back shift coverage overtime and some of the other, like onsite overtime, we're not quite back, and some of the other ones.
So my thought is the pot of overtime for, for the shifts that need to be covered is here.
Right.
Just because we add another officer doesn't automatically increase this pot.
Correct.
So that was my thought of that.
Well, but they're working 12-hour shifts, so one week they work 36, one week they work 48. 84 total, is that right?
They work...
So there's always four hours of overtime.
No, that's incorrect. They get a short day. They take a short day so they don't get built in overtime. And I think that's what's kind of messing up this overtime, 44, 44, 42. Because it's thinking they're working overtime every, every pay period. They don't, they take a short day of eight hours so they don't work overtime. Is everybody thoroughly confused now?
Okay, bring, bring it back and make it right.
And we can send this out before the next meeting for your review.
Good, okay.
Okay, do we have any other items to discuss for item 11, changes to the proposed budget? I would like to commend Chris on his IT budget. Just so happens that today, my, the company that I work for, we were looking at the exact same thing for additional terabyte storage. And when I told them how much you were getting for the dollar amount, they were blown away. They asked me, can I see that? Because I think we were paying, we were going to pay, pay pretty close to that for...
You didn't tell the guy his name who did it, did you?
Yeah, right. I think we were going to pay, pay pretty close to that for about half the storage. So, good job. I thought it was crazy at the time, I'm not going to lie to you, but I guess, I guess I just don't know why, I guess I don't know IT.
I didn't get that at all.
I mean, can't we just put a couple of jump drives laying around and just still...
I wish it was that easy, I really do.
We used to use floppy disks, you know. All right, let's move into item 12, discussion and possible action regarding revisions to the municipal development district bylaws.
Make a motion to approve the MDD bylaws with the additional modification of Article Two, Section One, the board is comprised of a minimum of two Shenandoah City Council members. The rest of the sentence remains the same.
So you're adding minimum, a minimum of two?
Yeah, it's a minimum of two.
He's wanting to change maximum to the minimum.
So just for historical reference, obviously, right now, we only have one city council member on the board. Councilman, former Councilman Byron Beavers was a council member when he was appointed MDD, no longer is on council, but he is still on MDD currently. So just right off the bat, Bill, what would that do for Councilman Beavers?
Well, it does, uh, once you pass, uh, it, assume you pass the bylaws with a minimum of two, then you immediately have, I don't want to use the term illegal, you've got a, a board that does not comply with the bylaws, and so you're going to, going to need to replace one non-city council member.
When's the next person rolling off of the board?
I believe it's September, right.
So could we make this effective at that time?
You could, you could pass these bylaws to be effective in September. Uh, yes, you can do that.
Okay, that's fine.
I guess I have a copy of these, of this, uh, at my desk. Usually y'all give me a copy of the ordinance if I'm going to be signing it. I don't see a copy of it up here.
It's, it's not an ordinance, Mayor, it's a, the bylaws.
Or the bylaws, yeah.
They're, they're part of the agenda pack.
No, I know, it's just usually y'all put it up here in my stack, so I wasn't sure if I had it up here somewhere and I was just missing it, or...
So we call a motion, do we have a second?
As of right now, we do not have a second.
I don't think so, okay. Charlie just seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Raymaker, we have a second by Councilman Broth. Do we have any discussion?
So my general philosophy on MDD is it should be as independent as possible. I mean, I would like it, frankly, I'm not sure we need any council members, but certainly a maximum of two. If we've got one, that's fine. If we've got none, that's fine. And that's why I like the idea of a maximum of two rather than a minimum. The MDD is supposed to be an independent board, and the idea of forcing that board to always have two council members, I think, is, is not ideal. So that's, that's my position. I like, I'm okay with the word maximum of two, but I don't want to force to have, forces to have two members on the board.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you at all, Mike. I mean, if I look at the wording of the, of the bylaws originally, it was a maximum of three. Nowhere in there does it say anything about a minimum number. I don't know that that was, I don't know that was the intent. If I, if I try to go through this and I look and say, okay, what was the intent of this at the time that it was created, I just don't know that that was ever the intent.
Yeah, and when I, you know, when I've been here, the time that I've been here, there's always been two. So it seemed like, oh, must be that that's the favorite number, is two.
Well, it gets weird with three. I, I think that's why.
You have a quorum.
You start quorum, you start other, other issues. I'm not sure how you... To me, it's a typo, like...
And this is changing it from being a, a maximum of three to making it a minimum of two. You can still get rid of that maximum of three. Isn't that what we got rid of in here?
No, the, what you're asking for is that there always be at least two council members-
Yes.
-on MDD. And I'm saying I disagree with that. I don't, I think the intent of the MDD is to be independent. My preference or my, my thoughts on that is, is literally you could have no council members on the MDD to be operating sort of fully independent. And in my reading of, of what the Texas Legislature had in mind is, is the MDD is to be an independent board with its own budget, its own finance, its own directives. And so, you know, I'm okay with having two council members on there. Obviously, I would not be okay with three. I, I just don't think we should require two council members to be on, on the board. That's...
I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I, I think that by requiring it, almost, it almost makes it as if you're saying we want the MDD board to be sort of part of, or some sort of subsidiary to the city council. And I don't think that's the intent of an MDD. I think, I mean, much like P and Z, it's, it's completely separate.
Yeah, that's my thought.
I agree with you completely, that's...
Mr. Fletcher? Haven't heard from you yet.
Um, I agree. I, I think that it, it needs to be independent. I think in the past, it's probably been more controlled by council than probably what it should have, should have been. My personal opinion. I don't like the, the terminology of, of a maximum of three. Two, I'm definitely comfortable with. I don't know, I just kind of feel the same as far, as far as it being independent. I, I would like, I, I know that, that council puts a lot of requests on MDD as far as asking if they could pay for this and pay for that, which is a good thing because there's things that they could pay for that they'd need to come out of our general fund, and I think that's what it was originally put in play for. I think also that, that I, I would like to see MDD actually come to a council meeting and provide a report at the end of the month.
I agree with that, yeah. If we're not here, yeah, we don't get one.
What's happening overall. I mean, I try to attend those meetings, but can't make all of them. It would be nice to have some reporting meetings, and I always felt that's what the purpose of having council present in those meetings, just as Charlie and I are on, you know, the civic level meetings. That, you know, there's a reporting function that comes back to council and kind of informs everybody as to, to what's going on and, and where we're headed, not necessarily, yeah, we proved this or we proved that. There, there's a lot of things that the MDD does for our city as a whole that I know doesn't necessarily get reported out there to everybody. It's not something that we're requiring, you know, that the MDD, MDD be on, um, our, our YouTube channel, so I think the reporting measure back to us. Something in, in the, the bylaws would probably be good as well. But I'm, I'm for it being independent. I think that's what it's created for in its entirety, I think.
So would it make, would it make more sense then simply to have the, the comment here that, uh, composer a maximum of two city council members and just strike the minimum completely out?
Yeah, is there a...
I think, I mean, because there is a...
Basically, as it's proposed.
And a minimum of, you know...
So, so the way that it's written actually is, is...
Yeah, I was going to bring up the fact that...
Would be correct, but how...
You, you want a minimum of, a minimum of three, a maximum of two council members and a minimum of three residents.
Well, I was about to say, if we're going to be honest, it says a maximum of two city council members and three.
Precisely, precisely three.
And three, so, so that means it has to be a maximum of three as well, so you...
So you, we need a minimum, we need to put back a minimum of three. So the word minimum of...
It should have minimum of three.
It doesn't say that. It's marked out.
Yeah.
The way, the way it reads is the board of directors shall be composed of a maximum of two City of Shenandoah City Council members and three City of Shenandoah residents and/or City of Shenandoah ETJ residents. So the reality of is that maximum applies to both council and residents. So you're saying they can only have, we can only have a maximum of three residents.
So you're actually, you end up specifying, you have to say precisely three.
It's a five-member board.
Well, it's a five-member board.
It's a five-member board, yeah.
So if you have a automatic two, then there's an automatic three.
But we're saying that, that you don't have to have a, a maximum of city council members.
You can put, you can put in there a maximum of two city council members-
And a minimum of three.
And a minimum of three.
Yeah, I think that's...
That's, that's what we need to do. We want that minimum back in figure. All right, so I guess we still have a question.
Well, as of, yeah, as of right now, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Raymaker, with a second by Mayor Prochel.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to state that the district was formed, I think it should have at least two council people on it because we are talking about a sales tax levy for the revenue source. And residents being in the, in the ETJ or whatever, I don't think, Bill, you can help me there, I don't think having no council, no council members on there should be an option. And that's just my opinion.
That you have a third option, and that is just to be very specific. You will have two council members and three citizens. That's the third option, if you just want to set it in stone.
Bill, could we not also add in a reporting piece to that? I mean, I like that idea of having a, you know...
Yes, it's easy.
It already says that there has to be a report in the bylaws.
I, I believe the last part of the bylaws has a reporting provision. If you look, uh, let's see. Trying to remember where that was.
I mean, there's financial reporting.
Yeah.
About that, I don't either, but...
It's under Section Two, Powers and Duties of the President, I believe.
Thanks, Joseph.
Subsection E.
Section A.
Oh, yeah, Section Two E.
Yeah, Two E, appear before city council periodically to give a report.
Yes.
All right, there you go.
Good.
Yeah, I thought it was there.
We just need to start putting that as an agenda item-
Yeah.
On the, on the second council agenda and...
So I would, I would agree with you, Charlie, in that he, he was saying that, because it is a...
Taxes.
Dealing with taxes, yeah.
Having to deal with taxes, the two councilmen and the three.
That way, they, the residents could, if we went to, to the board and said, we'd like you to pay that, it could be struck down by a three, two vote.
Right.
Which I think is important.
I almost, for that reason, think that it shouldn't be because there needs to be a checks and balances. MDD should not be an extra pot of money for council spend. I think it's, I think it's entirely appropriate for us to ask from time to time, just much like we do with water and sewer, for MDD to participate. I think that's entirely appropriate.
I agree.
But I like the fact that we have a second set of eyes. You know, there might be times where we're too close to the situation and we just want to get our budget approved, and we're not looking at the bigger picture, you know? I like the fact that there's a second set of eyes that says, hold on, let's take a look at this, this may or may not be appropriate.
Well, for, for checks and balances, then, I don't want to say that maybe it's not, maybe it's not the best thing to have one person be head of both bodies.
I don't disagree with you. Just like Mike said, it may not be a bad idea to have MDD entirely, independent council.
That's what my thought is, just to put a, kind of what's written, other than adding a minimum, maximum of two city council members.
I'll make a motion to table this right now because we seem to have a lot of different direction here.
So, Bill, Section A says that, that it's subject to the restrictions imposed by law and these bylaws. What are, what is the law?
The, the laws in what you're talking about is, is not useful. It, there's, there's no requirement one way or the other about city council members, a total one way or the other. The only requirements by law are that the MDD board have a president and a secretary that both are board members. So it doesn't, the statute doesn't address this about how many city council members. I will say this, as the city attorney, I would recommend against ever having three city council members-
Oh, great.
-because you have quorum issues and, and you, the chances of discussions drifting off, it's just not advisable.
Well, it's not a violation to tell the order to open the meeting for kind of...
No.
That's what, that's the whole purpose of a quorum, and declaring it's a quorum.
No, no, what I meant...
You're in an open session.
No, what I meant is that you have a situation where if MDD discussion drifted off into something that was going to be considered by council and wasn't on the agenda, you would have a problem if you had three members. So I'm, I'm just saying, it's a lot cleaner if you don't have three members. You can, you can do whatever you, you can do whatever you want. You just have to be a lot more careful.
So, Mayor, let me ask you, because you, you serve on both, and I don't want to try to pretend any other way, but how is it having to change hats coming off of council and then going to MDD?
I, I have to consciously think about the fact that when I'm on MDD, I'm representing MDD consciously. And, and God love him, I, I think Byron, the world of Byron, but I think there were some times when Byron was still wearing his council hat when he was sitting on MDD. And I'd say that to his face if he was here right now, and he knows I would.
Well, Byron is a, citizens first.
Yes, he is. Absolutely, he is. But I, but it, it is difficult. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pretend like it's not. You, you have to consciously think about the fact that I need to be thinking about the direction of this board and making sure that that, that whatever it is that this board's trying to accomplish and not is... trying to accomplish and not is just puppet strings for council. And I think that's a good thing. I think that's, I think that's smart. I think, again, that provides checks and balances.
If I can add, the officer designations are not permanent. They should be rotating every year. Sometimes the same person will get the same officer title if the board votes that way. But, for example, we have somebody terming out at the end of September, so then we would vote again on officers when that new appointment is in place.
I would like to see more of that. I mean, I know that we have many residents that have made applications for the MDD. Maybe I view this differently than others, but just as we want fresh eyes, even here on council, I think that just because you're, you know, recommended for the board that you don't turn out, I mean, if others are coming in wanting to be a part of it, I think we need to consider that. That just, just because you're there doesn't mean you're there for six years.
I believe the ordinance provides for three consecutive terms and then a year off before you could reapply to serve again, so...
I mean, I, I know every time we have to run, it costs us considerably, not just financially, but everything else, and, you know, it's not an automatic, just because my name's on the hat, that you're gonna sue me in two years. You probably won't in two years. Not saying anything, but...
Okay, so I thought I heard Councilman Raymaker say he wanted to table this. Are you pulling your motion back and instead...
Now, let's hear a vote on it and see what happens.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second.
So the original motion...
Well, the motion was to keep the language as it is, with the exception of changing the word maximum to minimum. So it would be, "The board of directors shall be composed of a minimum of two City of Shenandoah city council members." That was the, that was the motion. Councilman brought seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
May.
Okay, so the motion to change the word maximum to minimum dies on a 2-3 vote. Do we have any other motions?
Make a motion to approve this as indicated with the change of adding maximum of two city council, city council members and a minimum of three City of Shenandoah residents.
I'll second that. A motion by Council McLeod, I have a second by Council McGristy, with the exception...
I just, I'd just like to explain what that changes.
So where, so minimum has been redlined in the, in the, in the agenda packet, the minimum right before three city council resident, a City of Shenandoah residents. So I'm leaving the maximum in front of council members, putting back the minimum, the word minimum in front of residents.
So you could have one, one city council member, four...
And four, yeah.
Or none.
Or none.
And all residents.
Or, yeah, it could be five residents, it could be zero and five.
Yeah. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries 3-2. To keep the wording as it is written, maximum of two, add a minimum of three, City of Shenandoah residents and/or ETJ residents. Okay, we'll move on to item 13, which is discussion and possible action regarding an agreement with the Woodlands Township to remove temporary signs along Grogan's Mill Road.
Counsel, this was discussed at a previous meeting, and you'll see the, a draft of the revisions in your agenda pack. I did send this draft to the township, and they have it slated for their August 22nd board meeting. I also let them know that it's not been approved by council finally, so if there are changes, it will, the revised draft will go to the township for consideration on the 22nd.
Do we have a motion?
I think that we'd open this for a discussion-only item until the township has the opportunity to review it and bring it back.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to make this a discussion only, a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I think it's important that we give the township the opportunity to review it and see if there's any changes that they'd like to recommend before we say this is all we're gonna do, and maybe they have some other ideas that, and you all may have already talked to them about any other ideas, and I don't know.
Yeah, it seems to...
I think that we wanna wait to see.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that. I did not, I would, unfortunately, this is one of those few items that we didn't communicate on. I didn't realize the city administrator had sent this over to the Woodlands, but, but yeah, if they've already got it, there's no point in us voting on it until we know whether or not they approve it.
Well, I think it was a good idea that you did send it to them.
No, I did too. I did too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I honestly thought that's what we were voting on tonight, was to whether or not to send it to them.
So Kathy, is there, is there, the problem is that the Woodlands code enforcement only works Monday through Thursday?
That's my understanding.
So why is it they don't cover the most busy day of the week, busy days of the week?
I'm not sure what was driving that decision.
And, you know, and then is there, what do we get out of it other than the right to pick up the signs? Do we get anything at all out of this?
Counsel has not proposed any, any requests.
I'm not sure what else, what else we would want.
Just a consistent look is all we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, that's all we're trying to achieve, and not only a consistent look, but, you know, somebody who lives in, I'm just gonna use Silverwood Ranch as an example, that drives home on Grogan's Mill every day to go home, and they see signs and balloons, and when it comes their turn, that, you know, they may or may not think about the fact that that's not okay because it's only one block over, or a realtor for that matter, same, same scenario. So I think it, I think it does two things. Number one, it provides a consistent message, and then number two, it just provides for a cleaner look.
I just wanna, I don't, I don't know, ours is still gonna stay the way that it is, but just trying to think of, is that a reason why some of those houses in the Woodlands are selling for more than the ones in Shenandoah? Because they actually are being noticed that they're there. I'm just bringing that up.
Well, that would be a whole bigger discussion than...
We've had one before.
That actually brings me to this point, is this is one of many agreements we have with the Woodlands, and I've started looking at them, we've got several of these. My concern with this one is we've got an outside organization who has legal authority over our residents, and we're asking once again to extend this, it's August, when does this expire, December?
December.
December, so we're giving them basically another year where this outside organization has authority over our residents and gets to tell our residents what to do. And so I've always been personally a little disturbed about that, that a resident who happens to live in a, in a property that was developed many years ago by the same company, in other words, a company, is now under the author, still under the authority of a totally separate governmental entity that is non-overlapping in terms of jurisdiction. So I'm a bit concerned about that, that we still are asking our citizens to be subject to two different government, non-overlapping governmental entities.
Yes.
Because one's a covenant, right?
Yeah, but this provides for a lot more. I mean, if you, if you read through the whole thing, obviously, this is, this is what sets up our fire and EMS services, obviously sets up the, you know, compensation and benefits exchange between our police force protection and fire protection. So this is more than just, I get where you're going with that, but this is more than just the covenants. And, and to that, to that end, though, it does also state in here some shared areas that they're responsible for, that we would just have to understand that then we would be taking over that. Section 1, Township should continue to provide the administration and enforcement of the covenants, that's what we're talking about here, but, but also streetscape, maintenance services, irrigation, water for the portion of Grogan's Mill located within or adjacent to the shared areas, Research Force Drive, so I mean, there's some, you know, this, this deals with our fire service, this deals with the additional police service that we provide them, it would provide for some...
But that contract's a separate contract. But it starts here.
If I can add something that might be helpful, I believe it was about a year ago, the mayor asked me to look into this issue of the covenants still being on city limits property, and I contacted the township to try and get that information, and it's, to remove those covenants is a highly complicated undertaking, and it would take, and I'm trying to recall off the top of my head, it would be roughly a three-phase process that would require a vote of everybody in the Woodlands, and to, and those covenants would be removed in parts, with the third part of that process finishing in 2056. So it is, it's not a simple process at all, you know?
And one question, one thing we didn't talk about at that time, but I've had this conversation with Gordy Bunch since, I think that might change if they incorporate. If they incorporate, we might actually be able to more easily do something about this covenant.
I mean, fine with, obviously, an HOA, the HOA that controls that whole area is fine, but to have, it's just very odd for me from a legal perspective to have, I mean, it's like City Willis coming down here and saying, you know, "We got some right over your residents," and it's a, it's just a very weird thing to me to go, to have a resident ask me, "How come I live in Shenandoah and I pay taxes to Shenandoah, and yet the Woodlands Township has control over what I get to do to my property?" And when I point to this, I mean, I, that's just a hard thing for me as a council member to explain to a resident, and so that's, that's why I continue to come, I mean, I continue to ask about this, is, A, if they've got the direct legal authority, why do we need an MOU for it? Or is this their legal authority?
No, this is not their legal authority.
Then it doesn't need to be an MOU.
They are, their deed restrictions, they're acting right now like an HOA. It's like you living in Shenandoah and living in Park Gate, and you're subject to Shenandoah rules and the HOA of Park Gate rules. It's just, in this particular case, the Woodlands, the HOA is the Woodlands Township.
Okay. So if that's the case, is, I guess my question is, why is this, why is this in the MOU if it's already taken care of? I mean, why was it, and I get that, and this, this may make sense, why if they incorporate it as a city, their HOA sort of activities may have to cease, but...
So what you're saying is, if we're adding this one part about removing signs, then why don't we clarify more than just removing signs?
Well, that's, I mean, because here's the thing, it's approving this extends the whole MOU a whole nother year, instead of talking about it and seeing that there's things...
But even if we didn't, we're still not gonna get out of MDD's covenants.
Well, that's my, that's my question, is...
You're not gonna, you're not going to get out of the, the covenants are the, are the covenants, they're the, it's the HOA rules that people are going to have to live with if you live in those subdivisions, no different than you'd have to live in the Park Gate HOA rules.
All this is doing is extending our police department the authority to remove signs in their area.
This is just shared services, a definition of who does what within these jurisdictions.
So we're actually enforcing their, because it's not in our...
That's right.
It's not in our jurisdiction, it's their jurisdiction, so we're actually enforcing part of their, their rules rather than our ordinance.
Well, or the revised MOU would allow us to enforce our sign ordinance.
Correct.
All right, we'll see what they say.
Yeah, I don't disagree, we might as well wait until after they vote anyway, so...
And the intent was not to rush this to their agenda, it was to let them know what we're discussing.
Okay.
It just went forward further than that.
Who seconded?
We didn't, we, oh, yeah, no, that's true, yeah, we had a, yeah, we had a motion, we had a motion to change it to discussion only, we had a second, we had discussion, so all in favor to have the item discussion only?
Aye.
Yes. All right, moving on to item 14, discussion and possible action to approve payment to the NCAA from ticket sales at the 2018 Stag Bowl.
I move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brock, we have a second by Council McLeod. Do we have any discussion?
Thank you, staff.
Very nice.
For going back again and...
Couple months.
Yeah.
They weren't as generous as I'd like to have seen them be, but hopefully we'll take care of that problem issue.
We're working on that.
I know you all, I know you are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 15, discussion and possible action to adopt filing resolution, the resolution of the City of Shenandoah, Texas nominating a candidate to the Montgomery County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Is there any real point in this?
Let me add that you're not required to nominate someone, you have the option to nominate, and, but you will still, after they have their public hearings, go through their process, you'll receive a ballot with the nominee, so other cities have the opportunity, other agencies have the opportunity to nominate people, and you can vote on those nominees.
I nominate Ron Raymaker, can you know it didn't make it last longer?
Maybe the, maybe the fourth time is a charm, but...
I'll second that for the fun.
So we have a motion by Councilman Brock, we have a second by Council McLeod. I was going to ask, I mean, I thought this was something the Councilman Raymaker wanted to do, is this something you wanna do?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'd love to find out exactly why it is that Conroy ISD gets 1,700 votes and we get eight. I wonder where the money's going.
I believe it's the size of the jurisdiction or some sort of criteria that determines how many votes.
I'd like to know the formula if we could find out.
That'd be interesting.
I'll look for it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to nominate Councilman Raymaker carries 5-0. Congratulations and thank you, or I'm sorry, one of the two.
I usually don't even bother to tell you what the vote was, just like, here's the new board.
Item 16, discussion and possible action to adopt filing ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, amending ordinance 15-033 regulating the sale of food and drinks from mobile businesses providing for a penalty in the amount of 2,000 violations thereof.
Counsel, this was discussed at a previous meeting at Councilman Fletcher's request. The revision is just to allow the private hiring of the food trucks for up to a maximum of three hours, so that's, that's been the only real change.
I would move that we would, or make a motion to, for discussion only.
Okay.
So I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher to make this discussion only. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Brock. Apparently we have some discussion.
Well, I figured there might be a few changes, so rather than try to incorporate all those changes tonight, I probably need to send it back to Bill and have him bring it back to us one more time. I did make some notes and pass them out for discussion purposes to everybody, so everybody has a copy of them on the diocese, and also with Bill and Kathy. I would recommend that we define who a resident actually is. That was one of the changes that Bill had, had made in here, was to define, or was to identify that anybody that's hired by a Shenandoah resident, so I think it's important that we define who a Shenandoah resident is, or may be, and if we can't agree on that, then we probably need to add another definition besides just a resident. But I think the way that it's currently written, so for example, if, if the city wanted to have, on lighting the angels, for example, a food truck come in and do the catering, the city would not be exempt from the way that this is going. So we would need to include something that would include a municipality or a club. Originally, this was, originally this was brought to council from a standpoint of a fundraiser for a private school or a church, and so we didn't address that issue either. So I think the intent behind all, all of this to eliminate, you know, or not eliminate, but provide some specific requirements for food trucks to come into the city and not just be here every day on whatever corner they wanna be, is proper. However, I think that if a resident wants to hire, you know, Snowcome guy to come in at the park for four or five hours at a party, or four hours at a party, then again, this would, would... this would, would, the new changes would allow them to now do that, so that's a good thing. But again, I'd like for us to be able to include our municipality in there as well as a, a club, or a church, or a school. And so we can either define that as part of a Shenandoah resident, or we can make a new line item.
So we really only have one church and one school, right? So the two...
Currently.
Right, currently. I'm just, I'm curious, I'm just, a couple of, a couple of things. Number one, why not a business? If Home Depot wants to hire a snow cone truck for three hours on Saturday because they have a big event sale, why, why, why not allow them to...
I have no, no objection to that.
Okay. It's just not listed in the definition, so...
Correct.
It doesn't say a business. And then the second thing is, what defines a club? Does it have to be...
Well, it could be, you know, a club that, that meets here or in the city, whether it's a civic club, or a garden club, or...
So, so here's my thing with...
Would have to have a physical city address.
With, with those, those organizations, my assumption would be those would actually, one of those would be a resident.
Correct.
So to me, we wouldn't need a additional definition. We would have, that resident would say, "I'm hiring that," or "I'm hiring that." You got a resident taken care of, it's kind of like renting space here, right?
Correct.
So I'm not, I'm not sure we need clubs, church, school's fine. We probably want to define what makes it a church, you know, so, again...
I wouldn't define it as a 501(c)(3) because it may not be in there.
Well, I think you've got, no, but I think by adding the provision that has a physical address within the city limits, that, that actually helps define school, club, business.
They have to actually contribute to our city.
It's a two-part definition that Ted proposed, and I, and I think it's correct. One, and we've changed it slightly, a person, a business, or the municipality, but who has a physical address within the city?
So my other concern is where it operates, and I saw this both in the originals, and then this, these changes. I think, I still don't think there ought to be other block roads or impede of emergency vehicles, right? Is that...
They can't, cannot block, they can't block, what, the way this is, the way this is written is the, and let's, let's take the mobile food business. If I, as, if I lived in the city and wanted to have a mobile food business for a private party, my mobile food business would have to meet all of the requirements except items two and four, so, okay? So in other words...
You still have to have a sales tax permit.
Still have to have a sales tax permit.
You have to have a Montgomery County food permit.
So it just, it just lowers the restrictions. The same thing applies to the ice cream vendor, which is handled separately, but that doesn't give anyone the right to block roads. If you notice on the ice...
I missed the number, that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
So let me ask, if, if we have somebody that caters a party at their home, or business, or wherever, and that caterer does not reside, or does not have a business in the City of Shenandoah, what's the requirement for the caterer?
You mean versus a mobile food truck?
Correct.
So it's where they're serving the food, right? So a mobile food truck, my, is food's being served out of the vehicle, caterer's going to load up, take the food inside, and then you're going to serve the food. I mean, that's, that would be the difference between the two.
The food is prepared outside of the city and brought in, right?
Or it's, it's again, where it's served and where it's sold, maybe, because I guess you could have a barbecue pit or something that you could be making it in your driveway, but it's being served in your house, or the back of your house, you know?
But I mean, that's just not, this, this ordinance does not address that situation. It's specific to mobile food vendors and ice cream.
And so my, one question is, how does this handle the sale? Because again, the previous discussion with previous staff was that the delineation had to do with where money transacted. So is this different from a hosted party? I call the ice cream truck over and I tell all my birthday kids, I give them all a ticket, and they give the guy a ticket, he gives them the ice cream, and I settle up with him later? Is that different than me suggesting to the ice cream truck, "Hey, I'm going to have a bar, a party at the pool, or I'm going to have a party at the park, why don't you come hang out for three hours and sell what you want to sell?"
That's why I was bringing up the point of the caterer, is that we, we've used the food truck in, in parties before, and while they may prep some of the food prior to getting there, they may have cooked some of the food as well, but they're serving it out of the food truck. They may be bringing it into a building, they may be bringing it to another area that's set up, but to issue, to, where, where's the transaction actually taking place?
And that's my question, it's a great question.
Is it one-to-one, or is it, I mean, if it's one-to-one, and it's more of a catering type of situation, or if it's, you know, it's different if they show up, like you're saying, and everybody's buying a single-serve ice cream every time they walk in, or if you're flipping the whole bill?
Right.
We have two different...
There's a different, because I could go, you know, hey, my buddy owns an ice cream truck, he, he's going to cut me in, I'm going to go hang out at the park and say, "Hey, you know, every Saturday, I'm going to go hang out at the park, and you can come out and hang out there for three hours, and you're going to make a killing, because you're going to hang out in Shenandoah Park and sell ice cream." That's, that's a, I want to make sure we're...
And, and we, on staff, we talked about this, the designation in the, in the ordinance is a private party. One of the things we recognized is if someone wants to abuse the privilege, then, and, then we have a different situation. And if we see the same ice cream truck in the park every Saturday and every Sunday for three hours, or however many hours, then I'll be coming back, or staff will be coming back saying, "This isn't working." But for the sake of simplicity, a, a simple ordinance, easy to read, easy to understand, it's meant for, it says in the ordinance, "A private party." And I think we all know what that is. Again, if someone wants to abuse the system, then we will deal with, with that. But hopefully, if you limit the hour short enough, it's just not a profitable thing. And that's, that was our thought process. I think Councilman Fletcher suggested four hours, I had suggested three. It, you know, there's no magic here, but some compressed time that is reasonable for a private party and not for commercial sales.
So should we say, three or four hours within 24 hours period?
Well...
So they're not, go away for an hour and come back?
Well, or, and, and I certainly can't...
Well, right, and that's a good theory.
No, and, and I can certainly add in, and thought about adding in, a private party is only allowed once a year, or once a month, or whatever, and that's easy to add. I think we all know enforcing that, no one's keeping track, it's only meant for the abuser who's there every weekend.
I, I wouldn't like to see it once a year, I mean, I have a lot, once a month, that's fine, so...
But I'm happy to add in, private party allowed X times a year.
So I'm, I guess I misunderstood the, having been hired by a Shenandoah resident, are we, are we stating that just because a Shenandoah resident, whether that be a resident, a church, a school, a club, potentially business, they, they could, there could still be an exchange of money at the window, so there are still people purchasing goods from that? Because what my understanding was is that by the resident hiring it, then we're not allowing that, that food truck vendor to...
Well, yes, they're talking about that vendor, right?
I think it originally came up because the school was trying to utilize a coffee...
Fundraiser, right?
As a fundraiser, where people just come in.
Again, right.
But, but he's not driving up and down the streets, he's sitting in a parking lot.
No, he's in a parked, parked area.
I think that's reasonable.
So then, so then, but, then the church isn't hiring him, the church is just allowing him to park there, and he's getting his money from the patrons that are coming to the window?
Correct. He's giving his, he's giving his money from those that come to purchases.
Yeah, so there's not really any hiring going on by the Shenandoah resident or church, which is what it says here, which is what threw me off. Because if we're going to allow for patrons to walk up to the window and exchange money, then now what we run into is, is wellman manor, because that's incorporated within the city limits, can now they have a food truck there every day for three hours for the construction workers to buy tacos at?
Their business. I mean, their business, it's three hours, unless we put, you know, limits that are...
What does wellman manor have a specific address?
I'm making that up, I mean, I would assume they might, yeah, I would assume they might.
The home they're building does, so...
But of course, that would be solved if you limited it to once or twice a year.
Yes, yeah, that's true, if you put some sort of a, you know, time limitation on it, whatever that might be. But like Ted said, he's got five kids, you know, Ted's going to need it more than once a year.
What do you mean, monthly?
If you said once a month, that's, once a month is...
Lunch trucks aren't going to, and if, and if they want to splurge and, you know, treat their workers once a month, that's cool.
But they're not treating them.
Well, then that's the question we need to talk about, it's just for sale.
That, that's a, that's different than somebody having a snow cone truck at their kid's party.
Right.
I'm not charging my kid, my, my kid's friends for the snow cones, probably, if I'm doing that.
You might.
Might.
What about...
Not chief, chief's got a comment.
What about the Woodlands resident that comes over here and rents our park, and wants a food truck to come to the birthday party that, because we had a lot of Woodlands people that rent the park.
They're not our resident.
Not a resident.
So they can't, they can't have the food truck there?
And not have a food truck.
Unless they happen to have a resident friend that's going to come to the party, and then that person could.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, you know, yeah, there's ways around it.
I think it...
And there's, there's one resident we have that has like nine kids that lives not far from Ron.
Good point.
On the other side of Ron.
Yeah.
So they're going to have to have more than once a year.
I mean, it was really designed to simplify what the previous requirements were for, you know, those that actually live here, or, or work here, or have a place of business within the city that are actually contributing to our city on a regular basis as a resident. And so I, I think, you know, we, we can always find those, they're going to find loopholes. Those are, those are usually fewer than not, the majority are going to, you know, use it for its intent.
I like the idea of looking at it and continuing to tweak it. I mean, my, listen, we went to my kid's school thing Monday night, and they had a snow cone truck there at the, you know, at the school for the kids, and yeah, it's a neat deal for the kids, whether it be snow cones, or ice cream, or whatever else, but I think we just need to make it bulletproof as much as we can. We're, like you said, we're never going to make it completely free of loopholes, but I think talking all these things out and trying to figure out all the different scenarios is a good idea.
I like to see it expanded from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM to, at least an 8:00 to 8:00, or an 8:00 to 10:00, or whatever our noise ordinance is, then following through.
I like, I like the 8:00 to 8:00 that you, that was suggested, I think 8:00 to 8:00's good, it's, it's kind of gets it shut down by nightfall and, I like, I...
What is the time on our noise ordinance?
I think 7:00 to 10:00 is our noise ordinance, isn't it?
Until 10:00.
Until 10:00 PM and...
But, oh no, I actually like 7:00 AM, because that, if you do that coffee, right?
I think staying consistent with the existing...
The noise ordinance might not, might be, and it might be, we add that as an exception, you know, instead of changing 1883-13, we put that in those two exceptions, right? A normal food truck is allowed to operate if it's licensed, blah, 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 blah.
If they serve coffee, they can come earlier.
But, if they serve coffee, they come early, yeah.
I think just keep it simple, just...
But my point is to put, put the hour exceptions in those two spots.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think...
Because if they're operating independently, no, 9:00 to 5:00, but if they're operating for the residents, for the residents or the churches, then they're allowed to do the 7:00 to 10:00. And I like, I like being consistent with noise ordinance, that's a good, that's a good thought.
Okay. Is there a consensus, a consensus regards to three or four hours, or are we...
I like three.
I actually liked five, but I'm going to adjust to four, so...
Right. Was that the, the mobile margarita thing? Depends on the, on who's having the party, let's just be honest.
Okay, just to make it official, we had a motion and a second to only discuss. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the July 24th, 2019 regular meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion by Councilman Raymaker, second by Councilman Christie, any discussion?
I just had a slight amendment, and I've talked to Courtney about that on page 49. Second paragraph, just where I was talking to Assistant Chief about the needs, what I, I think would be better represented is that Councilman McLeod asked Assistant Chief Gresham why they were asking for two officers now for needs that might take one to two years to develop. It's just an addition right in, right before it says for needs. I think that is a better clarification of what I was asking about.
Good catch.
I know Ron had similar concerns.
Okay, so I had a motion by Councilman Raymaker, would you like to amend it, including that language, Councilman Raymaker?
Absolutely.
Councilman Christie, would you like to...
I'll, I'll, so we make sure... I'll go in and second that amendment.
So we have an amended motion by Councilman Raymaker and Councilman Christie, based on the language that Councilman McLeod provided. Did y'all get that language? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And moving to item 18, which is citizens' forums, and we have a, Mr. Christian Moore that would like to speak. Are you here? Yeah, there you go. If you wouldn't mind, just approach the podium, state your name for the folks on YouTube, and comments are limited to three minutes. Just understand that we can't deliberate with you, but we do hear you, and we appreciate your comments.
Well, my name is Christian Moore, and presently, my wife and I live at Bender's Landing, right off of 99 in Spring. Our intent is to move to the area. I'm a pastor of a church that we were just launching here in Shenandoah. Presently, we are meeting at the Christ Community School Gym, and just developing a great relationship with the school there, and they've already invited us to partake with some of the programs with their parents and kiddos. And so I just would, my purpose really is just to introduce ourselves to the council here, and just make ourselves available to the council. If there are concerns or things that are on your hearts for the spiritual condition of this city, we feel that we would like to be part of the resort, part of the answers, and that we could be called upon. I'd like to maybe leave my contact information. Name of our church is called Evergrace, we're, we're kicking off September 8th, and our, our goal really is to reach out to the community, step outside of the four walls of the church, and really be missional and love on the community. So we feel that it's God's will, that God brought us here, and we're just excited to meet you folks, and just here for your, just for your blessing and application. Pray for us, so. If you'd like to find out more about us, we're at evergrace.org.
Awesome, thank you, sir. If you would leave your, yeah, welcome to Shenandoah. If you would leave your contact info with Courtney, that'd be great.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to your point, Ted, we now have two churches, see?
That's what happens when we get food trucks.
Yeah, that's right.
Business is booming.
Okay, anybody else want to speak? Y'all know me, I'll let anybody talk. No? All right. We'll move into item 19 then, which is city administrator updates.
Counsel, I just have a couple of quick things. First of all, staff met with T-Mobile's contractor to install the antenna on the water tower. You may recall that agreement, I believe it was worked out last year. Those revenues will help us offset a... Those revenues will help us offset a sum of the cost of the rehabilitation, so it's $25,000 a year is the lease amount. And secondly, the splash pad was repaired again on Monday. We had a bad activation switch, so it's back up and running again. And that's all I have.
Okay, we will move into item 20, which is Council Inquiry. We'll start with Councilman Raymaker.
I have nothing other than trying to find out what the formula is for our representation on MCAT.
We'll get that for you.
Councilman Fletcher?
Again, I just want to say thank you to staff for all the hard work that they've done through the budget process. The improvements that have been made in the transparency to our residents is by far the most transparent budget workshop that I think our city's ever seen. I'd like to also thank staff for working hard to keep the budget in line. I know it's tough work, and you have to make a lot of hard decisions and trimming things that you may see as a necessity that, you know, council may disagree with. So thank you for all the hard work that you all have put in. I know it wasn't one or two hours that you had to stay after, but Lisa, I know it's been multiple hours and almost there. That's all I had.
Councilman Gristi?
No, just sorry I missed the budget workshop.
Sure you are.
But I did think about you from the cruise ship, so, yeah, I just say that to you all then. But I got an opportunity to kind of catch up on it, and it sounds like it went very, very well, and, you know, everybody, everybody had a good experience from it, so I look forward to being there next year.
Good. Councilman Brock?
Well, I'd like to echo Ted's comments and thank staff for all their hard work during the budget process. I thought it was excellent, and we'll work on it again for next year, and I think we're moving forward real well. Compliments to Kathy Ryer for all her guidance as well.
And likewise, thanks to you all for your hard work.
Councilman McLeod?
Yeah, just a reminder, of course, everybody knows, school's in session, give yourself some extra time in the morning, and just be aware that, you know, kids are out, kids are moving around, pay attention to those flashing lights and put those cell phones away.
I'll follow that up real quick with, the police department got some love on Facebook. One of our bike patrol officers was following a school bus this morning, and our residents were extremely appreciative of it. Even several residents who don't have children commented on how great it was that we do that. And I think that just, you know, to me, I tell you all all the time, that, you know, that's just one of the great things about this city for me and one of the reasons why I love raising my kids here. Which is a perfect segue to talk about, and I know we mentioned Ms. Linda Woods a little earlier, but I want to just briefly touch on, several of us went to her funeral on, it was yesterday, wasn't it? Yeah, my days. Linda passed away on August 4th. She was a resident of the city. She was married to a former mayor, and she was a longtime employee. She worked for the city for 14 years. Some really interesting stuff that Linda Woods accomplished for the city of Shenandoah. I don't have the time to go through them all tonight and don't know them as well as probably what Wes Stevens does. He did a lot of research on that, so I would encourage you to reach out to him on, but one of the things that I thought was really interesting was she literally put the city of Shenandoah on the map, literally. Just hounded text dock to the point to where finally the state of Texas agreed to put the city of Shenandoah on the Texas map. And just that in and of itself, I think, is a great legacy for her and just a testament to how much she loved this community. So I'm incredibly thankful for people like Linda Woods that have it in their heart to serve this city, whether it be as a resident or a council member or a board member or staff or a strategic partner, whoever it is, because again, you know, this is a place where I want to raise my kids, and that circles me all the way back to the very first time that I ever met Linda Woods, when we were living in the Woodlands, blasphemy, I know, we saw where they had cut the road, they'd just cut the road for Park Gate, and we wanted to find out more about it because we wanted to change houses. And so my wife and I, we didn't have any kids at the time, but we knew we were going to be starting a family. My wife and I went to the Woodlands Home Finder Center and asked them about, "Hey, we know this neighborhood's coming in here." And they said, "Oh, that's actually not the Woodlands, that's actually Shenandoah." And so I told my wife, I said, "You know, I've passed that visitor center, I know where the Shenandoah Visitor Center is." So I drove over to the Shenandoah Visitor Center, and so Linda Woods was actually the very first person that I ever met that was associated with the city of Shenandoah. And one of the things that, when talking to her about why we wanted to move and told her, "Well, we're going to be raising a family and we're going to need a bigger yard because we're in a patio home now." And one of the things I remember she said to me, she said, "If you're going to be raising a family, then you absolutely need to move to Shenandoah because that is what separates us from the other communities in this area. We still focus on family first. That is what we are built on." And I thought that was a great, you know, thing to remember her by, because the longer I've been here, the more it holds true. So again, just can't say enough about, about all the, all that she did for the city, but there are many people who have done those things in different capacities, and I appreciate every one of them and every one of you. The last thing I'll say, kind of anticlimactic, is thank you, staff, for the, sort of the enhanced top sushi map and description. We talked about that. We talked about that before. Gives us a little bit better idea. We get the name of the business, we get the where it is, and instead of just an address or it's part of some survey plat such-and-such from some, you know, whatever, yeah, McDermott survey or whatever, and have no idea where that, yeah, have no idea where that is. So we asked and y'all delivered, so thank you, greatly appreciate that. So any, if nobody has anything else, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, and we are going to adjourn to executive session, and we, if I can find my little executive session sheet, we are going to discuss matters relating to the evaluation of the following positions, Director of Public Works, Director of Capital Projects and Infrastructure, Chief of Police, and the Assistant Chief of Police. And we will recess the regular meeting.
And deliberate discussions regarding economic development.
Oh, and deliberation regarding economic development, that's correct. So we will recess the regular meeting and adjourn to executive session at 8:37. Thanks, everybody.